Good evening. We have a full board meeting tonight, but first let's have Kaylin Brantley, a sixteen-year-old point guard and junior from Carter High School. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Montez.
Thank you. Do we have a report out of closed session? Yes, we do. Item number one, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Monica Garcia as middle school assistant principal at J. Hugh Middle School. The vote was unanimous. Item number two, the Board of Education took action to impose a five-day unpaid suspension on classified employee number 129035. The vote was unanimous. And item number three, the Board of Education denied the request for an extension of a leave of absence for certificated employee number 1381425. The roll call vote was President Edgar Montez, yes. Vice President Nancy O'Kelly, yes. Clerk Mistino Walker, yes. A member, Joseph Ayala, abstained. And member, Joseph Martinez, yes. Thank you, Dr. Avila. Can we get a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed session is adjourned. Open session will now be reconvening at 7:12 PM. First off, we will adopt tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Before we do so, I believe there's an item that needs to be corrected. Do you have a copy of that? There is a typo we need to correct. So we will be pulling the following line from page reference J. 1.1. And we will just be pulling one line under Carter High School for Michael Martinez, co-varsity head, boys wrestling. For the 2015-2016 school year, there is a typo, I believe, with the title of the position. So we need to get that fixed and bring it back at a later meeting. So we'll strike that from tonight's agenda. And do we have a motion to approve the tonight's agenda with that redaction from that item?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We go on to presentations. The first item, we have a presentation by Mrs. Janet Harper, Executive Director, Secondary Curriculum, honoring Rialto's middle and high school students who won medals at the Inland Science and Engineering Fair and who proceeded to the California State Science Fair.
Good evening, Mr. Montez, members of the board, Dr. Avila, Cabinet, and viewing audience. Again, my name is Jen Harper, and I have the privilege to give a brief synopsis of science fair and then get to what we're here for tonight, to honor the students and all their work. So, science fair, we think, is February. However, you ask the students, and it started probably late fall. They were starting to think about their ideas, gathering information, getting research together so they could do their project. They work on projects at their school, sometimes as a class, which grades are K through 3, sometimes as individuals, and then sometimes as a group. Several students work together, assign different pieces, do a lot of research. We have local science fairs in January at the school sites. Then what they do is they take the award winners and they send them on to the district science fair. We hold the district science fair in February, and last year we held it at Rialto Middle School. We get judges. We get judges from our particular site, all kinds of educators. We get judges from the colleges. We had several college professors in science come to judge. We had college students that were working on their masters and their doctorates come to judge. We have partnerships with UCR and Cal State San Bernardino. We had industry specialists come to judge where they had a particular interest in some of the events, whether it was water, whether it was waste management, or whether it was technology. So our kids are being judged by experts. We had over 180 projects at Rialto Middle School last year, and they were in all kinds of content area, from chemistry to biology to earth science to recycling to technology to engineering. And again, we had class projects. We had elementary projects from grades four and five. We had middle school projects and senior high projects, and then, of course, special interest projects. BRTech was one of our special interest groups. They were looking at projects that the kids did in waste management. And then we had Viola, which was another outside partner that was looking at projects that we did in water. We also had a third category for technology and engineering, and that came from our own technology department where they were looking for use of technology and creativeness. So when we look at science fair, of course, we have to look at the scientific method. We have to make sure the kids have hypotheses, they have conclusions, they gather data, they journal, and they have some reliable and valid data. If you're looking at the technology part, how do they use technology in their experiment? Is it just on the side, or is it really connected? Did they really take the skills that they've learned in school and apply it? Here's a quick little picture of everybody waiting for the results. You can see members of the board, cabinet. This gymnasium was packed. We had everybody in the bleachers. We probably had fifty chairs on each side of the alcove. Good thing Mr. Harris wasn't really paying attention because I'm sure we were over capacity. Unfortunately, we cannot have it at a high school because high school is doing basketball season. So we had, this is one of our largest facilities. All of these people represent outside judges that came. They were organizing their awards. And awards, of course, are ribbons, medals, certificates, scholarships, money, tablets. This is a picture of some of our gold recipients. These are our elementary, middle, and high school kids. Then we had some specialty winners. We had kids receive money, scholarships, $500. We had kids receive special incentives. We had teachers receive money for their classrooms. And then we had for the best use of technology. And I'm not sure if the parents were more excited or if the kids were more excited because they got tablets. I would have wanted one of those tablets. They were very nice tablets, probably about $600-$700 worth for it. And we gave those tablets to the people that had the best use of technology to further their education with technology. We wanted them to be able to apply it and be able to use technology every day. So right there are two young men that were at COLD, and you'll meet them shortly. And they won the best technology project because they had a search and rescue robot that actually would be like what you would do in war or earthquakes or whatever, where you would have to go in and remove rubble and, you know, find, hopefully, survivors. And it was awesome what they did. So, we had the school level, we had the district level. We then sent our top kids to the county, and this year it was at the Orange Show. We had over, not just us, but there was 2,000 projects. Imagine that, 2,000 tri-fold boards at the county covering all grade levels, covering all kinds of subjects in science, technology, and engineering. And our kids were well represented. We had a slew of kids there. We had thirty kids. So, then they judge. Again, their judges are outside people coming in, looking at the quality of what the project was, making sure the data was reliable and valid, making sure the kids had a journal, making sure the kids, their hypothesis and their conclusion matched, and then taking a look at how they presented it. They get interviewed sometimes, depending upon what their level is. So then, anyone that wins gold is invited to the state science fair in Los Angeles. That's an event that they have to spend the night in a hotel. They get subs for the teachers. And we were so fortunate because we had ten kids. One hundred percent increase from the year before. We've only had three to five kids. We never had to worry about funds. This year was a problem. We had to figure out, oh, my gosh, we need two bands. Who are the teachers going to be? How many subs can we get? It's a Monday. We know subs are really, you know, needy on Monday. So we had a big problem, but it was a good problem. So we transported all the kids there. We had two teachers that volunteered to be the chaperones. They took the kids to the state science fair, which is connected to SC, the Museum of Science and Industry down there. And they hopefully had a wonderful time. The pieces I heard, you know, good, good events. So at that, we have, from the whole state of California, all kinds of kids and all kinds of projects. Our kids did well. We didn't take any awards from that, but that's okay because it's an experience. Our kids made it to that level, which is fantastic. Again, having twice the amount that we've ever had is even more phenomenal. But hopefully, it sparked ingenuity in the kids. Hopefully, it thought, hmm, I saw this, or hmm, I could do that, or I could tweak that. And it's just a great learning experience. These are some of the awards that we gave out. Honorable mentions, ribbons at the various schools. You can see there's such a variety. Many schools are represented. We had first, second, third place honorable mention and ribbons. We had trophies to give to the kids, first, second, and third. Junior division is actually middle school. Sometimes that's, you think junior, well, it comes from when we used to be junior high. They never changed to middle. First place and sweepstakes. And again, most of these are, when we went to Rialto Middle, we had Juanita Chan calibrate all of our judges on what the rubric was. They walked around with iPads, so we had them experiencing 21st Century on a Google Doc, and that way they could keep track of where their scores were, and it immediately went into a spreadsheet so we could calculate it. These are our specialty awards. Unique this year, besides our BRTech and Viola Water, we had peer awards. When kids come to our science fair, some of them have to be interviewed. Well, you can't all be interviewed simultaneously, so you're waiting around. And so we gave the kids iPads. We calibrated them on the rubric, and they went around and judged science fair. And they gave a peer award. So that was a very cool thing. If I got a peer award, it meant that my friends, my colleagues in these grades felt that my science fair project was worthy of a specialty award. So basically, I want to congratulate all these gold students out here. I did nothing but facilitate the event, truly. You did all the work. You know, without you, we couldn't have had the event. So I really want to thank you tonight, and thank you for being here, and we have something for you. I want to thank all the teachers who supported the kids because it wasn't for one day, one night. It was from basically fall through spring, they supported the kids. They assisted them with their projects. They tweaked them, they gave them the what-ifs. I want to thank the district staff that supported us. Dr. De Souza for your wonderful leadership. Juanita Chan for calibrating all the coaches. My colleague Beth, who helped with the elementary piece. And I want to thank especially my secretary, Tina Brown. She's phenomenal. She is an organizer, she is a detail-oriented person, and without her, we would not have had the event as well as we did. Finally, Board of Education, your support means the world to us. You support academics, you support sports, you support the whole child. When you support that, that makes us feel wonderful. I'm sure the kids are very impressed that you're there. And again, we can't do it without your support. So thank you so much for everything you do for us. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for the PowerPoint. Thank you for the PowerPoint there, Ms. Harper. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to honor some of the science students who took home the gold. I normally would, but I'd rather share some of the wealth here and like to ask the board, do you give some of these out? So here you go.
Good evening. Welcome back to school. Okay, I was at the science fair, and I was extremely impressed with everything that happened there with these projects. Our kids are amazing, and I know they impressed these experts that were there doing the judging. It was really a wonderful experience. So we would like to honor the following students. For excellence at Inland Science and Engineering Fair, gold medal winner Yan Victor Ojana.
What grade is that?
Next, I want to give the same award to Brian Solis from COLD Middle School. And from COLD Middle School also, Tyler Wakasuki. And from Carter High School, Julie Barretto. Well, she's from high school. They probably have her overburdened with homework already. Thank you. So the next two students that I'll be bringing up will be from Carter High School as well. Andrea Benitez. The next student is Esma, and I'm tearing everything up. Esmeralda Lara.
Good evening, and the fun continues. Okay, would Macy Matsukawa come and join me, please? Okay. She was a gold medal winner.
We'll make sure to mail that.
Yes. Esmeralda Suarez, Rialto High School. Okay, they must be at college. Thank you so much. And I may not get another chance. Thanks to everyone who actually worked their fingers to the bone on doing this for our kids.
Right.
And to continue with the program, can we have Edward Segura? Okay. Next, we have Jessica Siznados. Well, they're on to higher challenges, and we wish them the best, especially with all the challenges we have down here right now with water problems and everything else. So one of these kids will be our shooting stars, hopefully with the answers to help us out.
Thank you, guys. Let's get that picture.
Big smile students?
Okay, we'll look at this camera first. Okay, one, two, three, four more, one, two, three, and then if you direct your attention over there.
If it would be okay, can we have Ms. Harper and all the staff members who work hard with this conference fair up here as well? Because this is for the social media, so we want to show. This is a hurry. It's live television. Live television, that's right. Thank you, students, for smiling so bright. You guys are great. Golden smile there, hold on. One, two, three.
Up next, item two, under Presentations, Summer School 2015. Presentation by Dr. Cindy Aguilar Muñoz, Assistant Principal at Eisenhower High School.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Avila, and community members of the city of Rialto. I am Dr. Cindy Aguilar Muñoz, and I had the pleasure this summer of being summer school principal. I'm here this evening to give you an overview of our program. Sorry. This year, summer school was hosted by Eisenhower High School, and our program consisted of three different programs within it. The first one was our ninth-grade bridge program. We also had the ninth-grade enrichment program, traditional courses, Apex, and extended school year. Our ninth-grade bridge program targeted at-risk students, our incoming ninth graders, so they were last year's eighth graders. They received three hours of math instruction, as well as three hours of English instruction every day. At the end of successfully completing the course, they received five elective credits. Our ninth-grade enrichment class, this targeted our students who demonstrated advanced proficiency skills in math. They were enrolled into an integrated Math I course, which is a college prep A through G course. And upon successful completion of that, they received five math credits. These students will be going on to Math II as freshmen this year. We also offered traditional classes. These are your regular in-seat classes. This summer, we were able to offer just about all the core classes, as well as health, PE, and art. New to summer school and really to the Rialto Unified School District, we also offered Apex this summer. This is the first time we've offered it. This is blended learning, which promotes, it's a web-based program, and all courses were A through G-approved college prep courses. Here you'll see a picture of students. This is one of the five computer labs that were set up at Eisenhower High School to service our students and give them access to computers all day long. This is a quick visual of all the vast array of classes that we were able to offer our students through Apex. We had approximately fifty different offerings that we were able to provide for them. And our last program was our extended school year. This serviced students ranging from grades six through 12. We offered mild-moderate SDC classes. We offered autism classes, as well as moderate-severe classes. All of these were also at Eisenhower High School this summer. And now for the data. Our traditional classes. I'm sorry, and this is the moment I realize I now need glasses. Okay, so I'm going to read off my paper. I can't see that. Our traditional classes, we started out first session, thank you, first session with an enrollment of 1,704 students. Of those 1,704 students, 1,030, I'm sorry, 1,315, which is about seventy-seven percent of them, successfully completed their class. Then we move on to second session of our traditional courses. We started out our enrollment of 1,275 students, and of those 1,275, 1,087, or about eighty-five percent of them successfully completed their class. Our enrichment and bridge classes, these are our incoming ninth graders that we are focusing on here. We started out with 201 students first session, and of those, 141 successfully completed their class. Second session, we started out with 152, and I am excited to say that of those students, we saw a lot of grit and perseverance, and 145, or about ninety-six percent of those students, completed their class successfully. And those ninth graders, again, that's another portion of summer school that is new. In the past, summer school hasn't really been offered to our incoming ninth graders. Our Apex class, being a new program, it sparked high interest district-wide, and we started out with 706 students enrolled. Of those 706, about forty percent became active in the program. And of those 267 that were active in the program- And of those 267 that were active in the program, 249 completed their class successfully. And our extended school year, we had about 69 students for both sessions. Our grade distributions, here you will see the vast majority, overwhelming majority of our students completed their classes with a C or better, which is great for our A through G rate. And altogether, district-wide, with secondary summer school, our students completed almost 3,000 courses this summer. Our student population, here you'll see that our focus was our 12th and 11th grade students, with the intent of ensuring that these students become graduates of the Rialto Unified School District. And the people who make it all happen, our staff. This summer, we had 47 teachers, three counselors, two noon-duty aides, and of course, our Eisenhower Secretarial and Custodial Staff, who worked diligently all summer to make sure the students had a learning environment they deserved. And finally, our summer graduates. I am honored to say that the Rialto Unified School District now has an additional 39 graduates. Four of them from Carter High School, 14 from Eisenhower High School, 11 from Myler-Zupanic, 10 from Rialto High School. And I'd also like to take a moment to thank our Board of Education, our superintendent, our cabinet, and other employees of the Rialto Unified School District who attended this event, our graduation ceremony, and really showed our kids that we are proud of their achievement, even if they took them an extra session or two. And finally, I'd like to thank Dr. Ed D'Souza and Mrs. Jen Harper for their support this summer and their hard work with summer school, and of course Eisenhower High School for hosting us. And that concludes my presentation.
She wanted to ask Cindy a question.
Dr. Cindy Aguilar Muñoz. We want to thank you, and we do have a question.
So I just had a question, and then Dr. D'Souza, I don't know, you probably may be able to have more information as well. Since the offering of the Apex courses, how many more additional courses, the A through G courses, have we been able to offer our students now with that for the summer school session?
I'll let Ms. Harper talk about it, because she was intimately involved in it, because we- actually, she actually set up the courses and had to teach the courses, because we didn't get a math teacher initially. So, do you want to go up or talk?
I think Cindy has the data. Okay, I can speak a little bit on that, one thing that I noticed-
I'm sorry, we need it on the microphone, I'm sorry.
I can speak a little to that. One thing that I noticed, and the students were super excited about, was that courses like geometry, courses that we don't offer anymore, we can offer through Apex. Also, students who had to take two second semester classes, we can offer that to them. Students who were really behind, but said, you know what, I'm going to get my act together, and I am going to take a regular class and Apex, they did it. So they really were able to challenge themselves. It was really a huge menu we offered, so on that end, students really appreciated it. And now we get students, hey, Ms. Aguilar, can I take, you know, geometry, or whatever, sweetie, summer school's over, you know, because we don't have those offerings anymore. So that is something I would ask the board to consider, because the students really enjoyed it and took advantage of it.
Thank you.
And can I add too, Ms. Harper worked hard on the labs for the lab courses. We actually have our labs set up and standardized for all the three high schools, so we are able to offer those classes during this year for the students. So it'll help our A through G rate to go up quite a bit.
For the Apex. Now, for the Apex, was it only offered, I mean, ninth through 12th grade where- had the access to the Apex, A through G courses, or is it just 10 through 12?
Not ninth grade.
10 through 12? 10 through 12. Okay. Thank you.
Ninth grade was the accelerated enrichment class that we offered, so that those kids would be able to go to calculus as seniors. So by taking Math I in the summer, they will be in Math II, starting as ninth graders, and be able to take Math III and then go on to calculus.
Do we have any more questions for Dr. Aguilar Muñoz?
Well, kind of directed to Dr. D'Souza, the Apex labs are still set up at all the high schools?
Yeah, that's correct.
And do we have teachers in those labs during the day?
Yeah, and we have it on the master schedule. We have teachers actually teaching it, and we will be looking at the schedules. So if kids are missing so many classes to get A through G compliant, we're going to try to put them in those classes.
Excellent, okay. Well, another round of applause for Dr. Aguilar Muñoz, and Mr. Sparks, and everybody at Eisenhower High School. Next, we go to item C, comments. Item one, public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. The following item will be public comments for any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda for tonight. Dr. Avila, do we have anybody wishing to speak on items not on the agenda?
We do, we have four. Our first speaker is Mr. Retibu J. Cox.
To the Board of Education, I'm just so happy to be here again. Still alive and kicking since 1980. I've been coming to this meeting, and I'm so glad to be here. And also, I came though to thank the superintendent for coming out into the community. We have not had a visitor from, as the superintendent, I would say, in quite some time, and it may have been 15 years, I'm trying to remember. So when you came, you made our day. You really- and you didn't come telling us what to do. We'd like that. We don't like to be told what to do anyway, but he came to listen. And that was- that's very, very important, to listen. And one of the things we learn in Toastmasters is to listen. That's a skill that a lot of people don't have. I don't know if he was shy, scared of us, or just didn't want to speak but wanted to listen. We appreciate that, and we want to invite you anytime to come to meet with the Westside Action Group. And the Westside Action Group meets every Monday, 12 noon, since 1972. It's probably the only African-American organization that meets every week, except the church. And we are not the church, we have all forms of people coming, there's sinners as well as Christians and Buddhists and Muslims and atheists and everyone that comes. So we really appreciate you coming. Another thing I wanted to say, though, I had read some reports about the African-American students, and we're very concerned. We're giving you time, we appreciate you. I want to tell you how excited we are about you. And we want this excitement to not just continue, but to elevate even further. So again, thank you, thank the board, thank for all you do, thank the parents and other citizens who come out, you know, to these meetings, because I go to a lot of meetings, and very seldom do I see 10 people in the audience. I mean, Water District, that's very important now, but you don't find people. And now, look at all of these people. I want to tell you, I thank you for being here, and thank those who are listening on television. Get involved with the education system. Without education, we would not succeed. So again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else?
Yes, we have three more. Our next speaker is Mr. Russell Silva.
Good evening, Board members, administration of the unit, and audience, my name is Russell Silva. In October of 2014, this board approved an agreement with Haven Private Investigation Services to complete an operational assessment of the district's security department operations. It's been 10 months, and I'm wondering if the assessment and the report have been completed. And if it has been completed, why isn't it available for public view? I'm sure something has been done, because a warrant for payment was issued in May of 2015. So if it has been paid, where is it? Why is it not available? Because for a lump sum of $38,000, I think the public should have a right to review this agreement. And secondly, another agreement was set up with the law offices of Gutierrez here and Erickson to review the status of some of the contracts under the Thicmat report. Some of these contracts that were done in the old regime prior to interim Superintendent Mr. Muhammad Islam were potentially fraudulent, and the review is to be made, so that we can see if there was an opportunity for us to recover some funds that were wrongfully paid. And we hired this firm because our current attorneys, Fagan, Friedman, and Phil Frost, were just too busy to handle it, so we gave it to them. And if it was so important to get this, why hasn't a report come forward? It's, oh, once again, it's been almost 10 months. And although I'm not a lawyer, I'm sure that there might be some sort of statutes of limitations. So if this is an important issue, why hasn't this been completed? Now, I know, under Robert's rules of orders, you can't directly address me, as I'm commenting to you here at the board, nor can you address any of the issues that I may bring up that the board hasn't previously done. However, these issues were voted upon and approved by the board. So my hope is that during the time when the board has public comments, that there might be an opportunity that we can at least address the public and give us an update on what's going on with these two- with these two programs. Because we're spending $61,520 on two supposed service reports that we're not getting any information on. And if we're not getting information back on them, this money could have been more efficiently and wisely used by either buying supplies, or hiring a new teacher, or even hiring to badly needed classified staffs at a much lower position. So I would appreciate if we can get an update on that.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Linda Silva for Cheryl Decker.
Good evening, Board. I'm here again for another employee. Cheryl Decker, who had a family situation and unable to be here tonight, asked me to read this to you. I do not like contracts, sirs and ma'ams. I do not like them, I am not a fan. Years of curriculum testing and CTE did not make me like contracts, don't you see? I do my best and process them each and every day, but business is not my cup of tea, and I am sadder every day. The district was once the best place to be, now they have lied and transferred me. The way things are done are wrong and unjust. Something should change before we are dust. So hear me now, plain and clear, I no longer like it here. This comes from me, the one who loves Rialto beyond doubt. I've always taken pride in my job and helped everyone out. Now I do contracts, perf's, and prequals, it often makes me want to climb the walls. Some often say this place should be like a business and not education. Why not put such people in jobs with business notions? The lack of respect and lack of goodwill make this a place of mayhem, though I still- though I love it still. It's not a good place to work or be, and I just don't like contracts, don't you see? It was great to work for the like of Ed, Veronica, and Jen. Even now, the people aren't the issue, it's the district within. Please treat all classified and the class that you yourselves would want before these halls become ones we will want to haunt. I do not like contracts, no how, no way. I do not like RUSD very much these days. By Cheryl Decker.
Our next speakers are Mr. Pablo and Jacqueline Norvietta.
Good evening, Board members, and Dr. Avila. I want to say welcome to our district. We are very excited for you to be here. And I'm just here to say thank you for all the support that I received from you during my transfer from Fitzgerald to Kodiak. I want to say my kids are very happy now. They love the school. We are very happy too, the parents. We are so surprised about the organization that they have in Kodiak. Teachers are very, very professional, and we are very surprised and happy. Thank you so much about that. And also, I want to say thank you to Dr. Avila for the national night out, the national night out. It was a very wonderful night. I think it was very successful. And thank you for the supporting that you were giving to the family, the Muñoz family. I think that was very beautiful, that you were supporting that family, they really need the support. Thank you.
Basically, she said everything. We are happy, and we are here to support all of you guys and support each of the members, and do whatever it takes to put the best education for our kids. We have a lot of potential in Rialto, and we have to do whatever it takes to give the best to the kids. We are here for them, and we are here to help. Thank you.
And I forgot to say thank you to Ms. O'Kelly for your quickly response, and this is Valenzuela, Dr. D'Souza, and Mr. Muhammad. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
De nada, señora.
And lastly, we have Marty Harris.
Good evening, President Montes, members of the board, and Dr. Avila. As a member, as a member, as a representative of CSEA, I'm the CSEA Labor Relations Representative, and I'm going to be transferring out from representing members at Rialto and going on to another service area. And in my place will be Anthony Muñoz, who will be the CSEA Labor Relations Representative assisting this chapter. And tonight, you made a decision that I would like to thank you very much for. And from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate the decision that you made concerning a classified employee.
And we have no more comments in this section.
So with that, we go on to item two, public comments on agenda items.
And we have no requests in this section.
Okay. Well, is there anybody here that would like to fill out a speaker card and be given a few minutes before we move on? All right, then we go on to item three, comments from association executive board members, Rialto Education Association. Do we have anybody from REA? Dr. Avila, if it's okay with you? Board, it's all right with you guys?
Oh, absolutely. Just, she can fill it out afterwards, and just identify herself.
Llena la tarjeta después, por favor.
Gracias, Mr. Montes. Buenas noches, miembros del board.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Avila, Superintendent, the audience. Si, este, es breve lo que vamos a decir, nomás queremos agradecerles por el soporte que le dieron a la familia Muñoz, por Daniel. Muchas gracias, Dr. Avila, la señora Johnson, la señora Saída Hernández. Mister Gordon, o Saída Jeffrey Hernández. Muchas gracias por el apoyo que le dieron a la familia, especialmente porque Daniel era, estaba en especialidad. Muchas gracias por el apoyo que dieron a la familia. Gracias, Mr. Montes.
It's going to be very brief, thank you. My-
My gratitude for your support for the Muñoz family. Mentioned the support from Saída, Mr. Gordon. Thank you. Regarding Daniel, he was special need. I may have missed a few names. I'm sorry. ¿Cuál es otro nombre mencionado? Dr. Avila.
And Ms. Johnson.
And Mrs. Johnson. Thank you so much. And again, the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe Mrs. Lindberg was next.
I'll go with it.
Ms., right, Dina. Ms. Lindberg. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Montez, Dr. Avila. I'd just like to say that I think the school year has started out pretty smoothly. I've been to three sites this week. I intend to hit all of them sooner or later. I go into the lunchroom and talk with the staff, and the general consensus is that they are cautiously optimistic. So they're not going to say they're totally happy. They're not going to sing Dr. Avila's praises yet, although many were very impressed when they met him. They're just very cautious, as they should be. But I also wanted to share that Vice President Leslie Chambers and I met with Dr. Avila yesterday. Very productive meeting, and he promised to have his responses in writing to me today. And in the back of my head, I kind of said, yeah, right. But indeed, by the end of the day, had those responses in writing, and I cannot tell you how pleased I am with that. So I'm looking forward to this year. I think our members are as well, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, California School Employees Association, CSEA.
I get a workout coming to these meetings.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Avila, Associate Superintendents, and viewing audience. I too would like to thank you on behalf of CSEA for coming to a very fair and reasonable decision with our transportation employee. However, I would like to also interject that when it comes time to looking at the discipline that was issued, that we look at her pay. And I say this because even though she was out on paid administration, the bus drivers are the only employees of this district, classified, that when they're on paid administration have a financial hardship. Because a lot of those bus drivers are only contracted for four, maybe five hours a day, and all of their money is made in extra trips and times. So when an employee is put out on paid administrative leave from the Transportation Department, they not only don't, aren't working in their position, but they're taking a severe financial hardship. If I were to do something wrong in my job and I got put out on paid administrative leave, I wouldn't know whether, I would be appreciative, but I wouldn't have, I wouldn't feel anything. I would have no money lost. I would have no hardship on my family. It would be me just being able to deal with my situation. Transportation people have to deal with their situation and deal with their family hardship because they've been out on paid administrative leave. I would like for you to be fair in the decisions that you make in looking at her pay, because I think that we can come to some sort of a fair and equitable average that she can be compensated with so as that her family hasn't had to pay. This has been going on since February. So from February to now, that family has been hit financially hard. And I appreciate the fact that she still has her job, but I'd also like for us to be fair all the way across the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Do we have any more, Dr. Avila, for comments on the agenda?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome back to school.
Good evening, Mr. Montez, the Board, and Dr. Avila. I know, we're just a sub, right? You forget about us. I have a question that I know that you probably can't answer, but I see an empty spot here, and I would appreciate sometime you let us know when that's going to be filled, because I, you know, like I said, I'm still trying to get one in San Bernardino, and I don't want you guys to deteriorate that far. Okay? I'd like to say that we've had very interesting few weeks of negotiations back and forth with Tom Hallerton and Aaron Rogers, and we've learned a lot of things. Senior Risk Management was there, and the lady that does the preschool was also there straightening us out. We have come to, I hope, an agreement that is going to work for everybody. We haven't presented it to the other subs, so as soon as the substitutes have a chance to vote on it, then we'll be able to, if it goes through, present it to you. I think it will fly, even though Yerupa just raised their rate to 145, which is far above what you guys have, but I don't think that's going to last at 145. But we're looking forward to working with you all through this year, and maybe we can do some other things, because I know that we learned a lot in the management thing, and we're looking forward to other things like that. So keep up the good work, and we shall see you later.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, and I do apologize for that. Next, we go on to Rialto School Managers Association.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, everyone. To the Board, Education, to Dr. Avila, to Cabinet, and the community, want to say welcome back. We also want to say welcome to our new Board member we have for our Vice President of Legislation Action. We have our Senior Director of Student Services, Angela Bradley. Scott Sparks was kind enough to remind me that he has extended his stay on the Board, so we were basically able to nominate. And they, we nominated with the Board, well, the, everyone elected Angela Bradley, so we want to welcome her aboard. Wasn't here last month, for last month's meeting. I decided that I was going to be out of town, so I wanted to thank Dr. Avila for the leadership charge that we had, well, the leadership conference that we had had. A lot of our managers really enjoyed it. It reminded us what our jobs and duties were, and basically that we were servants, and we were basically here to be community servants. And it reminded me, you know, as an administrator, that we have to go back and be reminded why we, why we're here, to serve students. That's what we're here for. And not just students, but serve each other. So we were minded by that. Talked with several of my colleagues, and we were, and we were just reminiscing about it, and it was, it was a great activity. And so a lot of them wanted to share that with their staffs, so I just wanted to tell him thank you for that. Also, I want to thank all the classified management, also certificated management, for all the hard work that they've done to start our school year, because it was a lot to get done in a few days. So we wanted to say welcome, and welcome back to a new school year. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Monty Stewart. Thank you. Next, we go to item four, comments from our Superintendent.
Thank you, President Montez, and members of the Board. I have a few items to report on. One is, as mentioned earlier, on Tuesday, August 4th, I participated in the city's National Night Out. And along with promoting some of our district's accomplishments, we also found a creative way to hold a fundraiser for one of our preschool students, Daniel Muñoz, whom we lost to gun violence in a neighboring city. I especially want to thank the staff, but also the parent volunteers, Mr. Pablo and Jackie Urbieta, Rosa Fuentes, Ruby Santiago, Mirna Ruiz, and Monica Del Rio, who were there from the parent center and assisted staff at the booth. Various Cabinet members and other staff members also came to donate to the cause. And this year, we again seized the opportunity to raise money for Daniel Muñoz. Our collection helped raise more than $500 for the family, so thank you once again to all who participated. And especially, again, to Jackie Urbieta, who ran around the facility, gathering folks to stop by and make their contributions. She spent more than two hours in that close to 90-degree heat, so it's commendable what she did. It was a very successful event for the district, its schools, and especially our community. Also, as Mr. Jacobs, Jay Cox mentioned, I was honored to attend the WAG meeting a couple of weeks ago. I was really humbled in attendance by the passion and commitment that the team there has for the African-American community, and in particular for students. It's very commendable, and I will continue to attend and do my part in doing whatever we can as a district to address the needs of all students, but in particular to the subpopulation of kids who need additional support to be successful in our schools. Also, recently, I met with Mayor Robertson, Mike Story, and other city staff to discuss a number of topics that really promote the spirit of collaboration between the district and the city. I attended Back to School Night last week. I visited Casey and Curtis and Fitzgerald. And at Casey, got the opportunity to witness Cugarcitos, performed their group, folklorico group, that included kindergartners, first graders, second and third. And I know that they had only been rehearsing for a short period of time, but their performance was amazing. This past Monday, as mentioned earlier by another speaker, I did attend the wake for Daniel Muñoz in the city of Colton. And yesterday, I attended the service at St. Catherine's Church with a number of staff members who were there to show support for the family during this very difficult time. And I have completed physical visits of all the schools, meeting with all the principals to really get their feedback on many of the things that they may need, while also highlighting a lot of the great things that are happening at, at their schools, and also asking them to really give me three to five things, or more if necessary, on what is it that they as site administrators expect of the Superintendent. I want to be able to get the feedback so that I can redirect my mission, if necessary, based on the needs of the staff at the sites. And this morning, I was honored to attend, or to be invited, and I attended the Kiwanis Club breakfast this morning. Had the opportunity to address those in attendance, and really shared part of the vision and direction that the district is going in at this point in time, and had a very productive question-and-answer session. And I did promise to become a member and continue to attend meetings to really connect with the community and keep, keep the community informed on the happenings here at the district office. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Next, we go to item five, comments from members of the Board of Education. And we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Joseph Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez. Welcome back to school. Welcome back to a new school year. It, even when I'm retired and I'm not reporting every day, it seems short. To parents, some parents, I hear it wasn't long enough, but to most parents, I can understand both sides. California School Boards Association holds a conference each December. Last December, I attended. It was in San Francisco. A couple of Board members attended. It was very good. And one of the keynote speakers, Dr. Freeman A. Habrowski III, was a speaker, and it really struck a chord within me. So I've asked, and the Board has received, a copy of the book. It is "Holding Fast to Dreams: Empowering the Youth from the Civil Rights Crusade to STEM Achievement." In short, it gives a history of the civil rights movement, then goes through best practices. For me, what I really gleaned from it were that our youth has not grasped the need to use what we innately have as a resource, stubbornness on the negative side, but grit, persistence, resilience, and commitment when you look at it in a positive way. And the reason they haven't done that is because we, as educators, have failed to realize that they need to tap into that side of their personalities. So I would like to congratulate Kolb for teaching last year on grit. Carolyn Eidi, I hope I didn't butcher that last name too badly. Thank you. I look at this, and this holds true for every color, race, creed, every individual, every person, even adults, we can continue to learn. The news has said that South Korea was the smartest country, and a friend of the family, their, their school day starts when they leave home at 5:30 and return at 11:00 p.m. Then I shared that with a friend, and he said, but look at the suicide rate. So we've got some things right. We don't want to keep our students to where they, they become so frustrated with themselves, with life. All this to say that the book holds, and what got, really got me was STEM, you know, science, technology, engineering, and math. When you tie that, and then the data showed that 5% of grads that enter a STEM program, specifically a STEM program, are the graduates with that degree. That means that 95% have either entered and failed to complete a, a degree, or more likely have gone through and chosen an easier degree. And I'll, I'll have to talk about it at another meeting. We are changing as a country. Our students need to be able to get a degree for the future, not a degree that, that may have been minimized in, in pay grade by technology. So they, I truly believe STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, they're the people who are going to be able to maintain high pay grades, maintain the automation. You hear the, the high, everyone wants higher pay wages. Look at the, the data on that. It's not positive. Success is not easy. I looked, I studied a bit. I looked at Einstein. I looked at Edison. I looked at Tesla, all within STEM. That was before it was called STEM. That's 100 years ago. And it really, really holds true that Einstein, the theory of relativity, took decades to get, and it's still not exactly 100% correct. So students, community, realize that learning is not easy, but if you can learn to tap into your side of stubbornness, your personality, and come out with persistence, resilience, commitment, what Kolb calls grit, you're going to get a lot further. Don't get frustrated. Just, if you need to get away for a little bit, get away from it, but get back to it. Stay focused. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Next, we go on to Mr. Joel Yala.
Well, thank you, President Montez. Good evening, staff and community. Welcome back to the start of another exciting year. I would like to share some of my thoughts tonight about families and their children. Being a grandparent of 10 children, we have our challenges at the Yala household. And, you know, you have teenagers, you're going to have some challenges. And speaking about teenagers, it's, it's not a bad idea to cook some nice dinners, because a lot of times, they're active, they're out with their friends, but if you get the opportunity, it'll pay dividends. Even if it's just one night a week, make it special. Take advantage of that time to get to know the kids. You can read the body language. If they were smiling the day before, but they're quiet tonight, you know, you don't want to invade on their want to invade on their privacy, but you are the parents. And, you know, it's okay to ask, is everything okay? Maybe not in front of everybody at the dinner table, but after dinner, you know, "I noticed that you were a little quiet at dinner." Anything I can do to help. You know, they have boyfriends, they got girlfriends, and, you know, things can be devastating for a child. They want to go out for cheerleading, and they don't make it. Really, really, got to watch your kids, you know, because that's their lives, that's their world. And, you know, we sometimes forget that, you know, we need to go up and beyond sometimes. I've said it many times, those are the critical years of growth. So then I come up with this five minutes. What is five minutes? You know, you're walking down a hallway, somebody grabs you, "Hey, Mr. Sanchez, Mrs. Smith, can I speak to you for a minute?" The wrong response would be, "I'm sorry, I've got to go somewhere right now." You never know what that five minutes to spend is going to pay off for somebody, somebody in need. If they're stopping you, listen to them. That five minutes may mean an awful lot to somebody. So again, when your kids are at home, you know, if you want them to be successful, you got to get involved. You know, you got to check, ask them those questions, you know, "Where's your homework?" Okay, you don't have any tonight, but, you know, you should have some somewhere along the line. And if, you know, if you're, you don't have homework, then how are you practicing? So they get involved, and they give up. You find these social circles. Sometimes, maybe you might have to risk a little bit. What I mean by risk is, say, "Miho, miho," or, "Son, why don't you invite some of your friends over, and we'll have a dinner for them?" And reach in your pockets and say, "You know what? And afterwards, maybe we'll give you some money, and you guys can go to the movies" or something. Yeah, I know, that's going to cost, but you'd be surprised. "You mean, your parents gave us money to go to the movies? Wow." All of a sudden, they look at you a little different. They look at you a little different. Okay, it's not easy working with our kids, it's our children, but it's worth every amount of effort, every penny that we spend on them. But, you know, I'll leave it with this. You know, if you're not sure if you're doing the right thing, just think of these two words, and you'll be on the right path. Respect and fairness. If you're showing respect and you're being fair, nobody can debate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Yala. Next, we go on to our very own board clerk, Ms. Dino Walker.
Ms. Ms. Just really just glad to be here again, starting a new year, a new school year off. I still haven't completed a new year yet as a board member. But I'm very excited about everything that I've heard around our new superintendent, around some of the activities that are going on in the district now. I've talked to a couple of my daughter's friends, who are students here in Rialto, and they were really excited about school, starting again after complaining all summer that they didn't want to go to school, and they were so excited when school got back in. So between the sleepovers this last weekend and everything about that, and being excited about being back on their campuses, I'm excited to be a board member here, because I know that the energy that the students have for being on those campuses is really generated from what's happening in the classrooms and on the campus. So again, to the teachers and everybody, and even if you're not so excited about coming back to school just yet, glad that you showed up and were in the classroom for the students, because that energy is really permeating through our students. And when that happens, and our students, Ms. Jackie said, her kids were happy now, that helps with the family and being happy. And that all is a circular, if you believe in that whole, everything is interrelated and connected. It all makes us all, you know, do better and do well. So I'm just excited about the new year and all the things that are going to be happening. Thank you to Ms. Cindy, is it Cindy? I'm getting old and blind, so I, I'm like, I remember first names, maybe not last names. But thank you all for the department, for the report on the summer school happenings this summer, because that was really, looking at the data on what that impact, and what the students were able to achieve, and the opportunity that our students were able to have by the innovation and the new creation that you guys would have with the summer school project. I mean, that helps our students for the opportunity, not only to increase graduation, but again, for those students, when we're talking about being a model school district, having the opportunity for our kids to have all the classes that they need to perform at the top of the game. So thank you for those opportunities for all of our students, whether our special needs students, our students who are at risk, and our advanced students. It's just a great opportunity and to let and show us what's really going on in the district. Thank you. And the last thing is, again, about being compassionate in a district of, this is a family. So for those of you who all reached out to the Munoz family to support one of our children who was called, called home, wherever that home means to anybody, thank you all for supporting that family and the blessings and everything that you've all bestowed on those families and support for them. Again, Rialto, we are a family. And the things and the actions that we do exhibit that, and people believe that, not about what you say, but about what you do. So thank you for all the good and great work that we are doing and we will continue to do for this next year.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Please, our vice president, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly.
Good evening. And I want to welcome everyone back again to the 2015-2016 school year, which promises to be an extremely exciting and productive year. One of the things I want that we need to consciously remember and that shapes our direction is that our students deserve the very best educational opportunities we can provide for them. And our students must have the education needed to be competitive in the workforce later on in life. So I would like to share a powerful poem that I actually shared two years ago, but for those of you who didn't hear it then, I'm going to share it again. Because this poem is a reminder that we must maintain a strong commitment to excellence and to continuous improvement. We cannot and will not settle for less for our children. This poem was written way back in 1989, so obviously, there were issues at that point, and it's called Pretty Good. There once was a pretty good student who sat in a pretty good class and was taught by a pretty good teacher, who always let pretty good pass. He wasn't terrific at reading, he wasn't a whiz-bang at math, but for him, education was leading straight down a pretty good path. He didn't find school too exciting, but he wanted to do pretty well. And he did have some trouble with writing, and nobody had taught him to spell. When doing arithmetic problems, pretty good was regarded as fine. Five and five needn't always add up to be 10. A pretty good answer was nine. The pretty good student was happy with the standards that were in effect, and nobody thought it was sappy if his answers were not quite correct. The pretty good class that he sat in was part of a pretty good school, and the student was not an exception. On the contrary, he was the rule. The pretty good school that he went to was right there in a pretty good town, and nobody there ever noticed he could not tell a verb from a noun. The pretty good student, in fact, was part of a pretty good mob, and the first time he knew what he lacked was when he looked for a pretty good job. It was then, when he sought a position, he discovered that life can be tough, and he soon had a sneaky suspicion, pretty good might not be good enough. The pretty good town in our story was part of a pretty good state, which had good aspirations and prayed for a pretty good fate. There once was a pretty good nation, pretty proud of the greatness it had, but which learned much too late, if you want to be great, pretty good is in fact, pretty bad. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Last but not least, it's my turn. And first and foremost, I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I want to also welcome all of the returning students and all of the new students that are new to our district. Again, I want to thank everybody that has helped really get us to where we're at right now, because I don't think we're in a pretty good place. I think we're in a really great place right now. So thank everybody that has helped us in one way or another, contribute to that. I did want to address a few things. Somebody asked why we don't have a student board member, and I want to assure you that we will have a student board member. It's an awesome, awesome part of our board to have a student representative be part of this board. But unfortunately, it has been delayed to swear a person in and for a selection to be made, because the person needs to be democratically elected by their peers. We cannot appoint, nor can any one person or group of individuals appoint a student board member. According to our board bylaws, student board members have to be, not only do they have to meet the requirements set by the board bylaws, they also have to be in a runoff, go through a committee, and eventually be elected, just like all of us here, by their peers. So once that process is wrapped up, which I hear should be wrapping up pretty soon, then we will have an officially elected student board member to represent the student population of this district. And whoever that is, may the best person win. And next thing you know, they might be here at the next board meeting or the one after that, but they will be here and it'll be official. Also, I just, it's not the first time that I've heard concerns here at the board meetings regarding the assessment for, that was conducted by, for the security and operations assessment for our department, safety and security. One thing that we have to keep in mind is that an assessment of our safety and security department has never been done before, ever. And if it has, it was internally done. This was independently done by a third party, by professionals, retired law enforcement veterans. Who better to assess our safety and security department than the people that also do for our community the best they can, keep our streets safe, keep our neighborhoods and our communities safe? So whether we want to fight about how much the district spent on that, whether it was even worth it or not, I guess it can be made into a political or a personal opinion, depending on how you see it. But this district at the time took the initiative to say, "You know what? We need to have someone with professional expertise to come in from the outside and let us know if there's something we need to do to improve our department or not, or if it's doing a great job. If it's doing a great job and everything is fine, and all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted, and there's nothing we got to do, hey, great, high five." Money still was not well, misspent. It was still money well-spent. But if indeed, there's things that we have to do to support our department, to support our staff, to make sure that we are doing the best that we can to keep our students safe, keep our parents safe, keep this community safe, then those are things, those are decisions that have to be made. God forbid, something happened, and then someone throw in their face, "What, did you ever do an assessment? Did you ever even take a look and see that maybe you guys needed some support in some areas? Or maybe your department needed some adjustments here and there? Or is lacking some supplies?" We don't know. We're not law enforcement, we're not safety and security professionals on this board, nor are our administrators. Now, we, again, we thank our safety and security department for everything that they do, but when a decision like this is made, we do it with best intentions, for what's best for the safety of our students and our staff and our parents. Now, those details of the assessment, to my knowledge, is public, can be public knowledge. There's nothing to hide. Anyone is welcome to come to this district and speak to our superintendent or any of our higher-level officials and administrators here and get information that they'd like. I don't know, I don't know exactly what it is people are fishing for, but there's nothing to hide here. The assessment was completed, the district has to work on evaluating that assessment. I mean, I don't know how fast people want us to move. We got a brand-new superintendent, we got to give him time to warm up his seat, you know, and we're doing the best that we can. Regarding a legal question, regarding fraudulent investigations, legal counsel matters, that's attorney-client privileged information. We're not at liberty here to be sharing with the public, you know, confidential legal matters that are potential or potentially not, litigation issues or cases. It's just, we're sorry, but that kind of stuff, we're just not privileged to share. Now, whether it's done or not, whether it's an ongoing or whatever else needs to be done or not done, we're just not privileged to discuss anything regarding legal matters. I do want to thank not only the Rubietta family for everything that you guys do, but also some of the other volunteers that Dr. Avila mentioned earlier. I heard some very familiar names. These are parents, volunteers that work for free for this district. Don't ask for anything in return, other than a little bit of respect and dignity. They do a lot. Even if they didn't, all of our parents and people in this community deserve respect and dignity. And I just want to thank them. I didn't know that the parent volunteers helped with the fundraiser for the four-year-old Munoz that was tragically taken from this community. But I do, I do think that it just goes to show that the people, not only the people of this district, the employees, not only the students, but also the parents and parent volunteers in particular are here when we need them. And that's a big, big message that I'm grateful for as a school board member and as a parent of this district. I'm very grateful for everything that the parent volunteers do. So thank, I want to thank the Rubietta family and all the volunteers that helped, Myrna, Rosa, Fuentes, and everybody else that was able to help our staff put that together, because if any of us know what it's like to lose a family member, we know that it can be tough. It's very difficult, much less to lose a child. Extremely difficult. So, you know, when people come together, when the community comes together, when your school district comes together to help you, I think that's a blessing. So I want to thank the superintendent, everybody, cabinet, and everybody that helped that family during the difficult, difficult time. We know that nothing, nothing can be done to really alleviate that pain, but, you know, we do what we can. The other thing I wanted to just mention was, I think would be the appropriate time to do, would be now, because I know sometimes people don't want to wait till the very end of the meeting, so I think since I touched on the issue, I think now would be the proper time to just give a moment of silence for the family. And I got a write-up here, and I'll go ahead and read it, because somebody took the time to put this together. So I'll go ahead and read it. And it says, "On Wednesday, July 29, 2015, in the city of Highland, the life of a four-year-old Daniel Munoz was cut short due to gun violence. Daniel was a preschool student at Bemis Elementary School. Our district was beyond shocked and deeply saddened at the horrific way this innocent child's life was taken. As a father myself, I can say there can be nothing more tragic than the loss of one's child. Our sincere thoughts go out to Daniel's parents, Juliana Morales, and Oscar Munoz, his siblings, and extended family members." And this time, I'd like everybody to please join me and the Board of Education for a Thank you. Our prayers go out to the Morales and Munoz families in their time of great loss. Our prayers go out to the Morales and Munoz families in their time of great loss. So that takes us over now to public hearing. There is none consent calendar items, all items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education, members, or the superintendent for individual action. Do we have a motion to approve items reference E through J?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And we did make that amendment to J.
Correct. So with the amendment to J, we have a...
1.1.
1.1, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go on to discussion action items, and these have to be voted upon individually, one at a time. And the first item is to approve, K1, to approve the filing of the 2015-2016 consolidated application, Part 1, and to request funding to implement Title 1, Part A, Title 2, Part A, and Title 3, Part A, LEP and immigrant students.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item is to approve renewal of agreement with Enom Inc., DBA, goal book, to provide a computer application which will allow district teachers, coordinators, psychologists, speech therapists, administrators, and their support team to utilize online resources and professional development with the implementation of the Common Core State Standards, CCSS, effective August 13, 2015, to June 30, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And item three, approve the agreement, that's K3, approve the agreement with AEG Ontario Arena LLC for use of their facilities for the 2016-2017 high school graduations on Sunday, June 4, 2017, and the 2006, that should read, I'm guessing, 2016?
No, and the 2000, they're doing two years in one item.
Okay, and the 2017-2018 high school graduations on Sunday, June 3, 2018. I just have a comment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker and Mr. Martinez. I just have a comment, I just want to say that the AEG, formerly known as the Citizens' Business Bank Arena, is really, has really been a big help to this district to alleviate the growth of our community. You know, Eisenhower, I've been, I was lucky enough to be at one of the last graduating classes held at Eisenhower, same at Carter and same at Rialto High School, but when you see families standing, because there's no seating, there's not enough, our stands are not big enough. We've got families that are very proud of their students, and they want to be there, they don't want us to give them four tickets, they want us to give them unlimited amount of tickets for everyone to see them graduate. This is a cost that I at first originally was against, but I soon came to realize, after experiencing the graduations at the AEG Center, that it's what's best for this community, unless one day we build a really big, huge school with a really big, huge stadium and we can hold all our graduations there, but until then, this is the next big thing, and I think it's, you know, money well spent for this community and for our students, so I just wanted to say that.
And it's also covers a lot of other problems. We don't have to worry about the weather, everybody's in air-conditioned comfort, the kids get to see themselves on the Jumbotron, they love that, so it works out for a lot of reasons, so.
With that, do we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the last item is approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel.
That's going to be brought back, I thought you said, because she was...
Yeah, we're gonna table it.
So, okay, so we should have, we should...
We should have amended.
Yeah, let's make a motion to bring this back. Do we have a motion to bring this item back at the following meeting? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor to bring this item back at the following meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll pull that and table that. And then, last but not least, we don't have a student board member to get a preferential vote, but maybe Dr. Avila will do us the honor and give us a preferential vote to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Hold on, in memory of our student.
Right, right. In memory of Daniel Munoz.
Yes.
Do we have a first and a second?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eight forty-four. Eight forty-four.